Cat TV is celebrating thirty years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next thirty years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Approval of the agenda, public comment, approval of minutes of August twenty fifth, minutes of September first, special select board meeting. Warrants, reapproved payroll of August nineteenth, reapproved payroll August twenty sixth, reapproved accounts payable August twenty sixth, reapproved accounts payable Newtown Hall August twenty seventh, reapproved accounts payable PV one upgrade August twentieth, payroll for September second, payroll for September ninth, accounts payable September second, accounts payable Newtown Hall September third, accounts payable September ninth, accounts payable PV one upgrade September tenth. We're gonna add correspondence for a grant. Um, we're gonna strike town clerk election authority clarification and announcement. So we're gonna remove that. The town office space community use, number eight, uh, the old town hall building, driveway apron paving follow up. Old business, we're going to add an executive for contractual. Uh, eleven A and um, twelve will be public comment and adjourned. So move. Second. Second. Well, any questions, comments? All those in favor, Angie.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Uh, I'd like to open up public comment. All right, approval of minutes of August twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-two select board meeting.
So move.
Second.
Corrections, all those in favor.
Aye.
Oh, we gotta do it. Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Mike. Aye. Minutes of September first, special select board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any questions, corrections? All those in favor, Angie.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Brian. Aye. Mike. Aye.
Well, that is not the normal echo.
Catamount TV needs it. It's not.
It is, it's catamount access. They need to mute themselves.
Catamount, please mute yourself. Thank you.
Uh, six warrants, uh, reapproved August nineteenth, twelve thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and seventy cents.
So move.
Second. All those in favor, Angie.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Mike. Aye. Um, before we go any further with these, Tara, you wanna explain, uh, especially the payroll ones? Um, because you researched that out.
Yep, so, um, some of them we need to reapprove because the wrong amounts were stated at the last meeting. Um, so you approved the wrong amount on the warrants. And then a couple of them, the payroll specifically needed to be changed because we had someone that claimed holiday pay, but their rate was zero, so it didn't pay them their holiday pay. So we had to adjust that. So that's why you're reapproving.
And then can you give us clarification on, because we had three of the board members in the one? And you researched that out, just so that people understand, because we're reapproving it as a board again.
Yeah, so the one that three board members were in, they are signing for each other. So Brian is signing for Mike, Mike is signing for Jamie, Jamie is signing for Brian.
Okay, so we shouldn't abstain, we just.
But you are.
When we have multiple board members in, I, I still think when there's only one, when we have a situation like we had where we couldn't have signed warrants and approved them because there was three of us in there.
Right.
Um, we are totally legal to do that in that situation.
Okay.
And I just wanna make sure everyone out there knows that that, and they're very clear on that. I still think when only one of us is in, is in there, we should abstain from it.
Yeah.
But I think when we need to, in a situation like that, I just, I just want our viewers and our.
And Angie and Bob were not on it, so they're signing sort of for all of you.
Right. So we were totally within our rights.
Very good.
Okay.
Uh, reapproved payroll August twenty-sixth in the amount of eleven thousand four sixty-three fifty.
So move.
Second. All those in favor, Angie.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Mike. Aye. Approved accounts payable August twenty-sixth for forty-four thousand six twenty-two fifty-five.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Angie.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Um.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Mike. Aye. Reapproved accounts payable Newtown Hall, uh, August twenty-seventh, four thousand twenty-one dollars seventy-one cents.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, Angie.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Mike. Aye. Accounts payable PV one upgrade August twentieth till twenty twenty-two, twenty-two eighteen eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Angie.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Mike. Aye. Uh, payroll September second, two thousand twenty-two, eleven thousand six hundred and twenty dollar, or eleven thousand six hundred dollars and twenty cents, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
That's not, I'm in that one, right? Abstain. I think that was one. Payroll September ninth, two thousand twenty-two, eleven thousand five nineteen oh nine.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, Angie.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Accounts payable September second, one hundred, one hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars and three cents.
So move.
Second. All those in favor, Angie.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Mike. Aye. Accounts payable for the Newtown Hall, six fifty-nine seventy-one.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, Angie.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Um.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Mike. Aye. Accounts payable September ninth, thirty thousand three twenty-one fifty-four.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, Angie.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Mike. Aye. Accounts payable PV one upgrade September tenth, ninety thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty cents.
So move.
Second. All those in favor, Angie.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Mike. Aye. Before we go to correspondence, um, because that.
September ninth?
Um, no, because of the, um, PV one upgrade is in this, is in this budget. I just wanna give a quick synopsis, if it's all right with you guys. We just had a super commission meeting with, um, Darcy and, um, that project is, um, right on target, uh, budget wise. And, um, that should, you know, hopefully, everything's going the way it is. Um, we should have that project up, that pump station up and running, third week in September. So great job by our, our, um, wastewater treatment workers. And they've done, Darcy and her crew have done an outstanding job, they did a bunch of work themselves. And we are right on, we're right on budget, right, right on it. So, um, now I just wanna give a quick, quick update, nice job. Correspondence.
Okay, so I don't think we're gonna read, it's not an actual letter that we have in front of us, but we had a request to submit a letter of support or backing for a private company in town who purchased the moccasin shop. And they are applying for a community and economic development grant. Um, it's a matching grant of up to twenty-five thousand, it will not cost the town anything. Again, it's something a private business has taken the effort to go seek out. And they are just looking for the select board to say, um, that they support them and their voucher.
I, I say move ahead with it and send a letter.
Yeah, do we need a motion for that or just?
I make a motion that you send a letter.
Of support.
Of support to BCRC.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, Angie.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Abstain. Um, town office space community use.
Okay, so we have had some questions come up or rise of different agencies possibly using our space, different, um, community groups, the swinging seniors being one of them. They currently use the space at the firehouse and they would like, like to come over here at the tent. Um, but they are the only ones, we've had, you know, the library needed like an impromptu use of space really quick and like an emergency basis that one day, cause black shopping was happening and, um, it was sort of unplanned for them. Um, and it worked out really nice, it was really great to have them here. But as a select board, I was just looking to see what you guys think, um, the use of the space might look like. Because if I remember correctly, when the building was suggested, being this size, it was always, I remember hearing as like a just citizen, that it would be used for other uses as well, like public use or maybe event space and things like that. So, um, we hadn't talked about that yet, so I just wanted to see what your perspective is on that.
Anybody have any feelings on? I know that from, from my standpoint, I'd like to hear from, um, Brian, Jamie and Bob, because that was part of your.
Yeah.
The board you guys run.
The part of that, and correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, but part of that thinking was, cause we were gonna have the, the old schoolhouse, that we were gonna have the meetings in there for all the different commissions and boards, uh, town hall vote or voting, uh, possibly doing the town hall meetings there as opposed to the elementary school or any other impromptu meetings. And I think we did discuss opening it up for public use, but I don't think we'd like put anything hard set in stone with that.
Yeah, we didn't, we discussed it, but we hadn't set.
Yeah.
Forth any, uh, policy on it at that point.
Yeah, cause I think we had decided, you know, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Because at that point, we didn't know what the fire marshal's gonna allow for occupancy and all that kind of stuff.
And it's, uh, of course, it's something that has to be, uh, very carefully, uh, very carefully done if we do that. Um, my, generally speaking, I, I think the municipal building should be used for municipal reasons, not for, not, not for, uh, private use. Cause once you open it up, now we've, you let this organization do something private in there. Now you have to let some other organizations and, and it's, it's a can of worms, uh, that we may not wanna go down. Uh, but i- if we do go down that path, we're gonna need a pretty solid policy on what is and isn't, uh, isn't permitted. Um, and I think, uh, I think it's easier just to say it's for municipal use and we can have some pretty creative municipal uses of it, but it, it's gotta be something that is municipal.
Well, that, we don't want to interrupt the operations in this area.
Uh, yeah, that's true too, you don't want it interrupting there and you, of course, you don't want, uh, scheduling conflict. We already have scheduling conflicts between the select board and the planning commission and the DRB sometimes. So, uh, adding more uses, you, you could have more of that.
I think regardless of which way you go, I think we need a policy, um, not just that addresses that, but also the use of the space for employees as well, you know, how, how much free rein do we sort of have in our offices? As far as, are we, how many plants are we having, how many knickknacks are we having? I mean, what, how do we want the interior to look? Um, because there's certainly varying opinions between people here in the office. So if I put it to you guys, it takes some of the pressure off of me.
So are you looking for a policy?
I think, I think we need one, yeah. Um, because otherwise, um, it, the space could become more, uh, it depends what you want the space to look like. I don't, I don't, I don't know. It's a municipal office building, it's not a home.
Exactly, and I think it should be kept clean and tidy and respectful of everybody.
So what I'd like to, what I'd like to suggest, I'd like to suggest at lea- at least a couple of things and we can talk about it from here. I think we should reach out to our insurance company, um, and ask our insurance company about, um, the swinging seniors, if they were to u- use an certain part of the space. You know, on a weekly basis, uh, what would that look like for our insurance? And we can just use them for an example or, you know, similar organizations. And our insurance company may say, I don't, absolutely not, or, or whatever it may be. So we may be having a moot point here, totally. Okay? I, I think that's probably the first place to start with that. I do, I do, I have reservations about opening this space up, but on the flip side, um, and I think Bob really touched on it, you can be pretty creative with municipal uses. Uh, and I'd like to see the space being used by residents and taxpayers of the townhome. You know, I, I really, you know, they're paying for it, it's, it's theirs. It's, it's not ours.
Especially if it's a community based function.
Right, so, so I think, you know, but the first thing I think is this, is to strike out with the insurance company and see where, where we're at with them and what they say. Okay?
That's a good start, Rebecca has her hand up too.
Yeah, that's fine.
Rebecca, do you wanna?
Um, yeah, I was just gonna pipe in and say that I, I, I have a lot of, um, work that I did on these questions way back in like twenty twenty-one that I can give to Tara. Like one thing I did was apply for a grant for that community space, which is the schoolhouse space. Um, and talked about, we had a lot of proposed uses for it, community proposed uses. Um, I had a conversation with our insurance guy, so a lot of that stuff, um, is Tara, I can just get with you this week and show you that application and talk about those conversations that we already had. And I can send it to all of you to refresh your memory, kind of some of the conversations we had about that space prior, if it's interesting to you.
Perfect example, definitely.
It is, but now, um, just a quick question on that is, does that mean that we are somehow, uh, treating the space, the schoolhouse portion of the town hall, as something different than the town hall? I mean, it, it's all the town hall, whether it's the room you're sitting in now or the, uh, or the schoolhouse.
Yes, so what we, so yes, it's all of the town hall, but it does have its own separate entrances and exits. Um, and so one of the things that we did talk about when I applied for that community, um, space grant was how that space could be used separately for things like what happened the other night, when that school group needed to come in and didn't have anywhere to go. Or if, I think we even said things like, if someone wanted to have a Tuesday morning yoga class in there or, you know, cause it's a big open space and I was applying for money to get modular furniture that could be moved around to make the space different for whatever group was in there. And then we really, I do remember very much pitching using that part of the space, um, for community involvement whenever possible. That doesn't mean that they should be able to also then have events like in your office, you know, or in the room you're sitting in right now.
No, I, I'm not as worried about, uh, my, my concern is not so much about, uh, whether or not, uh, it's about what is appropriate for you, for a municipal space. And if, and as soon as you open it up to, to, uh, private, then, you know, then, then where do you draw the line on political? Uh, like, you know, uh, do we have a, a Democrat or, or Republican, uh, meetings in there? Do you have, uh, uh, you know, and as soon as you start opening it up, you start opening it up to uses that, that a lot of people might not approve of.
Well, you can address that in policy for sure, you know? You can, you guys can discuss and discuss and, and, but I just, I just, I did wanna put back on the table that when we were discussing that space and I was trying to get money for it, that that was the conversation around it with that, there would be some opening of that, of that space to the community in some manner.
Well, it wasn't a commitment that it would be, it was a potential use, correct?
Yes, that was part of the discourse.
I think it's something worth researching now and I think, I think starting with our insurance company and seeing where Rebecca was, I think that's a great place to start and, and I think it's a great idea and we'll move forward with it in either, either in approving something or denying it. So we're gonna move forward, one way or the other.
And also. We'll move forward, I think, uh, the right way to say that, uh, well, the way I would say that. Not that that was the wrong way to say it.
Yeah.
Is whatever uses we decide will go into the policy. We are deciding to move.
That's true.
Policy for use and we'll hash out what those uses are.
Right.
And maybe in a po- in that policy or even a separate policy, we have an office.
Well, I, I wanna address that one separate.
Okay.
Right.
I, I think, I think, well, to address, to address your concerns about the individual offices within the building, whether it's Hannah's or yours or Trezor's or whatever, it doesn't really matter. Um, including Julie's space, uh, you know, whatever.
Even the kitchen, I mean.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right, whatever space we have here, um, I'd like to, I'd like to get two board members to come up with, um, some ideas on forming a policy, um, that, that we could adopt. And I think if two board members sat down and, and discussed back and forth what we thought was acceptable or not acceptable in, in an office, and they could sit down with, probably sit down with Tara and Hannah, maybe, maybe we sit down with, maybe we sit down with everybody who's in the building right now, not to limit it individually, and then maybe as a group.
And Angie, you were, um, your area of expertise was, uh, daily office management, so you should join us.
All right.
And maybe, maybe we'll need one board member, I don't know, I was just thinking, two board members, I have a little differing opinion and sit down, maybe you sit down, two board members sit down with Tara, then two board members sit down with Hannah the same too. And, and Julie and Ellen and so on and so forth, and then we build the policy from that research. And then it's not, it's not somebody's opinion really, it's kind of a really.
Joint.
And I can do some research and see what other municipalities do for their buildings.
That'd be great, yeah. Cause it, you know, things like candle burners or, you know, plants, is there a limit? Should we have them hanging, should we have them?
A lot of municipalities don't allow incense just because people with allergies and that.
Right, exactly, yeah, all that kind of stuff.
Right, and I think that's, I think it's a great place to start, cause with, with meeting two, two board members, that way we don't have, well, I mean, we're not in a meeting, two board members sit down with each person who works in the office every day and then sit down with them as a group and come to a general consensus and build a policy from that.
I think as far as policy goes, it's probably a long shot, but we, we oughta check, uh, just the VLCT website to see if they've got a model policy. Uh, as I say, it's all long shot, it's, uh, usually it's more common type policies that they have.
Yeah.
This one for a while.
And we have.
Yep.
Checking.
Okay, sounds good.
Anything else on, um, town office space, Tara? You good?
That was.
Uh, old town hall building.
Um, so, I've, anyway, asked you guys about this a couple of months back. Um, and we did have some people come and look at mold, remedying the mold. And we got really varying estimates. Um, but with the project that we're currently working on and the amount of money that's going into it, to me, I was like, gee, um, it, it's going to cost a lot to do anything with that building. The problem is it's on the same lot as the church. And so we can't just put it up for sale. Um, I, I don't know what the board's pleasure is as far as, do we wanna move forward with having the mold remediation done, which is thousands, but then also the, uh, structural changes that would need to happen to keep the mold out? Or do we look into some sort of leasing options where people have the option to lease, but they would have to do the upgrades?
Usually your tenant has, the, the owner has to take and deem the building in a safe.
Right.
Manner prior to leasing.
I thought the building was already safe and I thought some mold remediation was taken care of and that's why we also had the air filter for our employees. I know a lot of this happened before I was on the board.
I.
But just what we were talking about, about the community space, if we can't do anything with the, the old town hall building, why couldn't we let people use that space? It's a big building.
That would be a good idea, too, as long as.
That way.
You deem it safe.
As long as we deem it safe, we're already, we have to keep the water on, cause that water supplies the fire department and a lot of people might not know that, but that supplies the Pongal Center Fire Department. So we cannot shut the water up, so we have to keep the power on for the water. You're gonna have to keep the heat on somewhat, so the water doesn't freeze. So I think maybe we should do what we can to make that, where people can use it and let people use that as a community use and see if we can get some grants or whatever to improve the space. Or.
I like, I like the grant idea, to be honest with you, because.
Right, I don't wanna spend any more money.
No, I, I don't. But on the other hand, on the other hand, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be the board that lets the building fall in.
Right, because the front of that is historical.
Yeah.
And, and the, I, you know, I don't know.
And you still have a safe in there, there's two safes in there, correct?
Mm-hmm. And nobody, you know, a lot of people don't know, but the, the marker, when you walk up to the back of the building in the, in the walkway, there's a.
Center of.
That's right, that's the geographical center of the town.
That's right.
Okay, so there's, there's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of variables that say, we can't sell it.
Right, but I would not have a problem with letting the seniors use that weekly. Or I know that we can't make money on it, but I think if somebody wants to use it, if they gave.
Well, if we figure out what the expenses are and try to cover some of the expenses.
Right, like a donation of like, here's fifty bucks to go towards the heat or twenty bucks for electricity or whatever.
So.
No, you, you, we could legally lease, the state leases out property.
But it goes into the budget on a certain line to cover.
Right.
Electricity and the heat, right?
Right.
So I mean, I think that's something we could look into.
Taking profit.
So what I, I think what I'd like to do is, is let's research out in your spare time.
Well, I, no, I was just.
I know, I know. I know.
I mean, they paid all that money for the walkway and everything.
Right.
I mean, it's handicapped accessible, it's a beautiful walkway.
It's not, it's not a bad space and.
We could have the maintenance man or whoever, cause.
It's exactly what I was gonna say.
Say shovel and whatever, cause they do the church anyways.
That's right, our, you know, our new, our new hire can, can make sure that it's opened up, you know, for, for whatever group that's going in there, you know, I can be part of his job, which is totally fine with me.
And it does have bathrooms.
Guys, but.
Well, it should be anyways, cause if there's an emergency in there, then we have to access it for the fire department or whatever.
Right.
So I'd like to research out to see if there's some grants to, um, take care of upgrades to the building. And, you know, to, to make it a community center, so to speak, it might, it might kill two birds with one stone, so to speak.
Yeah.
You know, we, 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 we cover some of our costs, some of the town's costs on maintenance of the building by letting some groups in there, but it also maintains the building and keeps it functional and operational.
Right.
And, and it gives community groups a space to, you know, access for, for their functions.
And even like, um, having two meetings or three meetings the same night.
Yeah.
For us.
Yeah.
Our, you know, members and stuff, maybe they could use it if they have to, instead of jogging every different night or whatever.
Right.
I think I wanna be, I, I do wanna be clear on this though, cause I wanna get back to your point, Bob. I think if we were to open that building for community use, I still think we have to have that policy.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. I think that's precisely what I was gonna say and, um, and also not only with that policy, it also alleviates the, the need to use the town hall. So I think if those.
Right.
This would be the other building and then, and then it would have to adhere to the policy. And then, but we could use it as overflow if we had multiple.
Exactly, I mean, if we're gonna have to keep it, cause we can't do anything with it, we're gonna have to maintain it, why don't we let people use it?
Yeah.
And we can add it into a policy similar to the, our, what we have on the green. And we can add it into a policy similar to the part we have on the green. We have a policy on the use of the green.
Right.
And we can take a lot of the information from there and utilize it in there.
I just think, you know, I just wanna be clear, there's not gonna be a willy-nilly.
Right.
Type of building that, you know, anybody can come in there and do what they wanna, you know?
Right.
Um, you know, so basically, I just wanted to be clear on that. At least my opinion is that's what it should be.
Yeah, I agree.
So if you could look into that, some grant applications, maybe, see what we can do.
Okay.
Perfect.
Or if Rebecca's out there listening.
Yeah, she is.
She also can, cause she does such a great job, Rebecca.
Um, driveway apron paving follow-up.
So basically, I think Roland is still waiting for an answer. We did try to get some prices, but, um. Like, I think I explained in the email previously, it's tricky to get cost comparisons, like. They can tell us what they will charge per ton right now, but we don't really know how much we would actually need. Um, and then the prices that we would get for town prices would be based on next year. And that's always based on how much we're paving, cause it's a large project and that. So the pricing is really hard to research out.
Hmm.
Um, and I'm still getting the same, same opinion from Joel, our road foreman, that we should not pave that. Those two driveways, driveway and parking area, I think is what it was, the two aprons.
I agree. I had, um, that I wanted to make a motion tonight. Not to. Um, pave the driveway apron since he was the one that put the grass there, and that we should file the recommendation of our road foreman. And we don't wanna set a precedent. If we say, okay, we pave it. Who's gonna say other people, like, well, mine didn't get paved, mine didn't get paved.
Five years ago.
Five years ago, you know, six years ago, whatever. I respect him and. I'm sorry for the circumstances, but I think we really should, um, go with our road foreman recommendation and not pay back.
I, uh.
Are you making that motion?
I'm making that motion.
Okay, that's fine.
And then, uh, uh, I'll reluctantly second that emotion, uh, that motion, uh, I, but I agree with everything you said, Angie. And I, I'm glad you said, uh, you know, we respect the guy. Uh, he, he really was w- willing to work with us, but it sets a dangerous precedent.
It does.
Where, uh, where we have to be, we have to be pretty careful.
Any more discussion on that? I mean, you guys know what I said. I, I went there. I met with Joel and the individual. Um. We did, I thought, I thought there was a pretty viable solution offered that day.
Right.
With, with the pavers on site. So, um. I don't know why it didn't come to fruition. I couldn't stay there, was, you know, um, so. But there's a motion in the floor, there's a second. Any more discussion on it? Any questions?
Yes, uh, the only last thing I'll say about it is, uh, is, uh, you, I know it's gonna be years and years down the road, but the next time we're up there, we need to make sure we hit that driveway.
Yeah. And I think that's, I think that's a good point. Um. I also think that, you know, if there's, if, if by some chance our road crew is doing some paving somewhere. And of the, on their own, and they have some blacktop left over, maybe they could take it up there to, to the property and, and put it into the apron.
I don't have a problem with that, but I just wanna make a point that the grass is there now.
Oh, it is. I haven't been back up.
Yes, and so he hasn't removed it or anything, so I don't think it's fair that. Our road crew has to take out the grass and then pu- pavement there.
I was, I didn't know that, so that's a good point, Angie. I, so, okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, no, but if.
Any more discussion?
Uh, we just, sorry, since we brought up the grass, I think the only thing is, if we're ever gonna be up there again, we need to make, let them know that we'll be up on such and such a date. So that he has an opportunity to get rid of the grass, because he needs it right now for drainage.
Right.
Right.
We can't remove it now in anticipation, something might happen.
Right, that's why I'm pointing that out, that there's grass there and that we shouldn't pay.
To remove it.
Town workers to remove it.
I agree.
That means we need to give them heads up.
Right.
Right, okay.
Motion in the floor and a second. All those in favor? Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Old business.
Okay, I just have a few things.
A few?
A few.
One would be good.
No, a few. Um, old business, the ordinance of the solid waste.
Ordinance, yeah. So we do not, we are not required to have a public hearing, but we are going to schedule one. And I am thinking about doing it for the next select board meeting, but I need to just look at the calendar and if that gives it enough time. Um, technically, it would go into effect the twenty-second, uh, twenty-sixth, sorry, if we don't have any petitions filed. But we were gonna do a public hearing just as an educational informative type.
The twenty-sixth of September?
That's effective. Okay, yeah.
And you were, you were thinking of a.
Twenty-second.
You were thinking of a hearing on the twenty-second?
Yeah, like maybe at five P M, like do five to six and then have the select board meeting. Does that make sense?
That's fine with me.
Other people's opinions before I.
Yeah, that's fine with me. I don't, I don't know if we have another, can, Bob, you might have a trouble making a five o'clock. Um, public hearing on the twenty-second?
I will probably have trouble making that. Um, if I do make it, I'll be just like this zoom.
Right, yeah, I can't, I can't make a five o'clock. Five thirty was hard enough as it is.
Wednesday? Does Wednesday help or no? Makes it worse.
I cooked Wednesdays.
Yeah.
Mondays, Wednesdays, Thursdays. I think we just, I think we just set a date and.
Yeah, and I think, I'm gonna.
Three of us could be here.
As well, is gonna invite, um, the D R B is planning also, because they were involved too, so.
Yep.
We will have, you know, enough people on a phone. I'll have good.
Let's, the, is there a D R B meeting scheduled for, cause they meet Wednesdays, right?
They're not scheduled that twenty-first, no.
So let's schedule a public hearing on the twenty-first at six P M. For the, the ordinance.
Okay, twenty-first, not the twenty-second?
Yeah, Wednesday, the twenty-first at six P M. That's a little easier for people to make the six.
Okay.
And. All right?
All right, and then I just wanted to point out that, I don't know if people have noticed, but there's signs up on Route seven that say that there's a five hundred dollar. Um, penalty charge for, um, throwing trash on the road. Just wanted to point that out, that we are working on it and there are signs up now. Um, I had a. Um, person call me about, um, a permit for, um, log trucks on Darkwoods Road. How does one check if somebody has a permit or not?
Do you mean the excess weight permit?
Yes, an excess weight permit.
Could call me and check.
I have. So they have to have the number or the name of the.
Name of the company.
The company.
Yeah.
The reason for the, the biggest reason for the excess weight permit is, um. We have their insurance on file. They have to have X number of dollars of insurance. And so if, if a company comes in and tears a road to pieces, we can go back on their insurance company. That's the biggest reason for an excess weight permit.
And that's only what, fifteen dollars? Ten dollars?
Yeah.
It's very recent, right?
Twenty-five dollars for a flea, okay?
So I really would hope that people are applying for their permits.
Me as well, and they can either contact me or Joel.
Okay.
We both have.
Because there's been a couple complaints.
Okay.
To me. Um, the trail cams, have they been put up?
So they are with Leonard, because we were going to attempt to use them to help locate goats, sheep. I'm not sure. They were sheep, sorry. Locate sheep, um, and there was some trouble setting them up, so we are waiting for them to bring them back so we can. Um, fix them.
Okay.
Okay. The, um, pine tree from Greater Heights, have we.
Uh, uh.
Contacted him at all?
I have.
Because it's already in the middle of September.
I have, I have to talk to him.
Okay.
I don't think they're gonna like this, but he wants to, he doesn't plant in the fall, he plants in the spring. But he said we could mount a tree out there, put a tree up somehow and still do a holiday tree. So that is my plan, figure out how to get a tree out there for this winter. Because I know we really want the tree.
And that's, that's fine. We can, we can anchor, we can figure that out.
Yeah, we can mount a tree.
That's right.
As long as we have a tree.
That's right.
We, we promise.
No, absolutely.
Have a tree.
So.
I, I promise I will help you.
Okay, okay. And then my last thing.
Let me know, I'll, I'll help you locate a tree.
Awesome.
Okay.
My last thing, and I promise this is my last thing. Open house of the town office. Are we gonna wait until the schoolhouse is completed?
I think that'd be the right thing.
And so.
That's what I was.
And when is that supposedly gonna be completed?
Windows, windows will not be here until November. So that's, I mean, the siding and all of that is waiting for the windows to arrive.
Okay.
Wouldn't, let's, wouldn't it be nice if we could have a tree lighting and.
And an open house.
Same time?
Yes, that'd be lovely.
I'm not sure we could do that, but.
Maybe?
Maybe.
Maybe. That's a good thing to shoot.
We might not have, we might not have the building, the space finished, but we sure could be close probably.
Okay.
That would be.
That would be really nice, yes.
That would be really cool.
I just don't want people to think that we're forgetting, cause we're not forgetting. It's just taking a lot of time.
Everything takes a really long time.
The windows, the windows are killing us.
It is.
You know, I knew that. Eric, Eric and I discussed that with, with Tara. We, we knew that going in, that windows were way out, so.
And that's all I have, I promise. Thank you.
So we will have a Christmas tree to light?
Yes.
Okay, uh, if we have to dig a hole and bury it and anchor it with ropes and whatever, we, we will have a tree out there.
Okay.
Um. One way or the other, I'll, I'll help to find a tree. I know, I know there's some big ones.
Cool.
They're nice, really nice trees.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The only thing I got to add is, I've had, um, probably four more people since the last meeting. Kind of as far as the good job that Leonard's been doing on the animal control officer position. And just wanted to pass it out, pass it along.
And I also talked to Leonard about having, not an open house, but, um, he was waiting for the electricity and a couple of the little things. Where on a Saturday morning when the dump is open, that he has like, um, a community thing where people can come look at it. And bring a can of dog food or cat food, and we, um, donate that stuff to Second Chance. So he is working on something like that, so the, um, public can come look at it.
Maybe even a raffle where the winner can spend the night in one of the.
There you go.
Anything else on old business? Uh, perfect. Um, so that brings us to executive session for contractual. Need a motion to enter an executive session.
So move?
Second.
Second.
We're, we're good. We're, we're, we're all fans, contractual.
It's been a long day.
Yeah, I know. All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike, aye. I'm not sure whether action will be taken after this or not, so. Uh, no action will be taken. All those in favor? Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike, aye. Uh, I'd like to open up public comment at this time.
Nobody else in there?
Nobody here.
Nobody there. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn at six fifty-five, Ms. Mullin.
So move.
So move.
All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Well, thanks, everyone.
Cat TV is celebrating thirty years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next thirty years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.